Just wanted to remind you, I've heard sometimes we put things in cubbies and people don't always read them. Just saying, I heard it can happen. But a letter did go out from Carolyn, it had a summary of the roles, some guidelines, but she also shared that there will be an information session tomorrow, the 21st, at 11:00 a.m., upstairs in the Macintosh Music Room. So, that session is intended for someone who has serious interest in possibly considering an application for the Director Living in Community role. So again, tomorrow, the 21st, 11:00 a.m., upstairs in the Macintosh Music Room. So, and again, thank you to Ken, we'll continue to thank him right till the end because he has been a great partner. Other updates that I wanted to share, believe it or not, I know it's March, but we are in the process of partnering with our Resident Advisory Council on capital items for 2020. And you're probably saying, "Gosh, we just got started on 2019," and that's true, but it is a long process, a very thoughtful process, for the RAC as well as for administrations. So, they've been great partners in getting started early and submitting to us early so we can roll that into what departments are thinking as well. Where do we have similarities and overlaps? Where are there things that we miss because we experience the community different than a resident does? So, to that end, the RAC has started the process. They will be hosting chat rooms April 3rd through 5th, various group meetings. They'll also receive any capital item suggestions through the Listening Posts. Hopefully you've heard about those, they're on Wednesdays in each of the clubhouses, so they'll accept suggestions there. And then, beginning in April, you can also submit them in drop boxes at each clubhouse front desk. So, there's lots of different ways to submit that. And just for a review, a capital item is any depreciable asset, so something that is an asset, not a service, that exceeds $2,500. So, it just gives you a guideline, if you have a suggestion, it might not meet that, send it in anyway, because even if something's not capital but is an asset, it might still be something we want to hear about and consider. Okay? So, thank you again for that. And do participate, again, you experience your own sections of campus in a different way than every other resident and certainly than an employee. And then, the last major update, and then I have some just side items to give you updates on, is resident satisfaction. So, if you were at the last meeting, we reviewed some general summary items for results from the Resident Satisfaction Survey of 2018, and shared with you, we would be doing focus areas in each level of care. So, Krista and Tricia from Continuing Care aren't with us, they're down in Baltimore right now with some of their friends. So, focusing on independent living for today, and then a little bit around next steps. These are our top areas for independent living that we will be addressing for resident satisfaction in response to the 2018 results. responsiveness to inquiries and timeliness of communication. There was definitely a theme through all of our departments, all of our levels of care around responsiveness. So, more will be coming on what that strategy looks like, but we're going to be sharing and partnering around a communication matrix so that you have an understanding of how is it that we communicate? And then, it's incumbent upon the resident to utilize those resources to get that type of information. So, more to come, but that's just one strategy we'll be working on. The second item, so communication and responsiveness. Cleanliness of the community is another area of focus, again, in independent living, but we are seeing that theme. And then, the three last areas really surround our medical center, and so we're going to be very intentional and focused on the services there. responsiveness after hours and on weekends, confidence in the podiatrist, as well as confidence in primary care. So, we'll be partnering with the medical center to really work through why is it people feel that way first and foremost, that use the services? And then, how do we change that through either service delivery scheduling, but what's the why? So, those are our five main areas that we will be working on. And then, next steps tied to the Satisfaction Survey, these are the key areas. From there, we'll develop action items under each theme. We'll be working with our RAC, we'll be working with people in different areas to say, "How do we best address these to change your overall experience?" Because that's really what it's about. The score is a score, and it helps guide us, but really, the score indicates an experience that you're having with a service or a response. And so, that's really what we're looking to impact, is what's that experience like? So, this really is the best place to live. So, I will thank you in advance because you're all going to have to help us with all of those areas. And then, before I hand it off to my teammates in the back, just a few other updates. So, as you know, we've had some openings, we're a little bit, I say we're exec team light right now. And so, in Resident Life, the Resident Life Director position remains open. And so, in order to offer them some support, Charlene Archibault is helping support them from a communication perspective, making sure we've got our arms around that team, they have the communication and support that they need. So, I want to be clear, she's not stepping in as our Res Life Director, there's no plan for her to cover two areas on a long-term basis, but how are we making sure that communication cascade happens? So, what she does with her team, she's now also cascading to the Res Life team so they don't feel disconnected from the community, and that's very important. And our whole team's going to support them as well, but she's their key support person for communication at this time. Another update is, and I just want to share because some people might be asking, Justin, Justin's covering General Services right now, Chris Massey remains out. So, he's focused on General Services, Charlene's helping support Resident Life. Then, I will continue to work with the Medical Center. Another update is tied to massage therapy. So, I was really hopeful, and I think even said it out loud, that I would be able to give you a start date at this meeting. I am in contact, we don't have a final contract with the provider at this time. So, I'm hoping we exchange some conversations, today's Wednesday, Monday again this week. So, I think if we can't wrap that up, we might be exploring other providers, but the one that we had been partnering with and working with, we just haven't brought that to a close yet. So, if we get an update before the April Buzz goes out, I'll be sure to put it in there. And obviously, it's something that we'll be promoting as soon as we get that in place. And then, the last little bit of a tease is there's a new program coming out called Embrace Wellness, and it's really an overarching seven areas of wellness and different ways in which we address those areas. So, we're not going to give you the specifics, but you will be seeing information coming out in regards to the Embrace Wellness Program, the different aspects of that. And so, as you see it, you can know that we'll be presenting on each of those moving forward. So, that's a little tease for what's to come moving forward. And then, presenting today will be the Departments for Finance, Resident Life, General Services, Human Resources, again, Continuing Care isn't present today, but all other areas will be covered. And then, Justin, as always, will do an administration wrap-up. Anything we couldn't quite answer today, he'll deal with that and say, you know, this is the list for our follow-up meeting next month. So, before I hand it off to them, in their key areas, questions? I'll just wait for a mic. Morning.
Good morning, Tracy. I had to write this out because I wanted to be as concise as I can and not ramble, but this, I think, is a very important matter. Am I blocking the background there? Okay. All right. Is that all right? Can you hear me in the back? Okay. My name is Paul Blanford. Who are you? You're Ken's sister. I know who you are, you don't know who I am, but everybody knows who you are. This can apply to a tenant as well as an employee. All of you know I've been happy living here, and I think that people who know me can pretty much vouch for that. But a recent occurrence disturbs me, and I don't want to let a sleeping dog lie. The people in RAC work very hard to partner with management in trying to bring into the open the concerns people have here. Recently, several Listening Post signs were removed from the lounges and lobbies. Excuse me. They were put there so people could more readily see them and the person stationed there. If the Listening Post signs should not be put up in the lounges and lobbies, it begs the question, "Who knew? Who knew enough to take them down without having the common courtesy or the intestinal fortitude to inform RAC ahead of time?" I don't see, I don't like what I'm feeling, but something here flies in the face of the attempt for greater transparency. Thank you for listening. Thank you.
So, thank you. That is an issue recently actually addressed this week with our RAC. And so, we did have a conversation around that, not knowing who took them down, there was no direction to take them down. It was a conversation I had with Joan Santasano about taking them down and then to follow up with the RAC, but never direction without communication. That's not how we partner, not only with our RAC but with other residents. That being said, my message, just for transparency, to use your word, I don't think taking down a flyer represents transparency, I don't know who did it. However, we do have a consistent communication strategy, it is our bulletin boards. We've also certainly put articles in our Buzz around the Listening Posts, we want to promote those. We think the communication, whether it's with RAC or with management, is extremely helpful to impacting change. And so, we also learned some other things around the bulletin board, RAC space being utilized by some of our team, which isn't okay either. So, there'll be more follow-up coming on that. But yeah, we were made aware of the issue when I raised it to Joan, I'm glad that I did, because she actually thought that we had given the direction to pull them without communication, so it allowed us to clear that up. And to Paul's point, I think if it were resident-based as well, we certainly would just want to have conversations before taking down other people's information. But the overarching message is, regardless of who's posting something, because I catch flyers everywhere sometimes, it's "I'm selling this," it's on a door, that's really not how we communicate. And so, thank you for raising that, Paul. Sis?
I love the screen, but I'm having difficulty reading it today.
I think maybe if we could adjust the lighting up, I'm sorry.
No, I think that perhaps, maybe the print could be a little larger.
Okay.
Or the background could be darker.
Okay.
So, there's a white, it's a suggestion, and I find the screen extremely helpful.
Good.
So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know what fancy stuff Matt's doing back there, but I think he's trying to help me a little bit. And actually, to that, you'll notice on some of the green background slides with the white, we got some information that those are really difficult to read, so we tried putting black around the letters, and we can see if that helps at all. And if not, we can continue. So, I appreciate that feedback because we do want it to be useful. Sure. So, there you can see the green with the white, I mean, the white with the black around it. Is that easier to see than when it didn't have the...
The black is easier.
Makes it easier than with just the white on the green? So, this is helpful, we put it together, we think it looks great, but it's really how you're experiencing it in the room that makes a difference. So, I do appreciate that very much, we want it to be useful. So, just getting us caught up, since I just kind of went on my merry way. Yeah?
Tracy, my name's Ralph Bonney, I live in Oxford. We were wondering, what are the outcomes of last year's Halloween report?
Sure.
And, you know, is there any follow-up you can do on that?
Sure. So, actually, I reviewed an overview of those for independent living at the last meeting, Ralph, and there were postings on the bulletin board and in the Buzz, and I did share at this meeting that they were available at every front desk. So, you can certainly pick up a copy there. And if you had them, if you got a copy last year, it's the exact same format. Yeah. Barbara?
I think he means the results of the goal-setting for last year. What were the outcomes of the goals?
Do you mind just handing it to Brown? I just want to make sure I'm answering his question. Thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, what are the results of those, you know, the goals that...
So, what was last year's action plan?
Yes.
Okay. So, I can pull that forward. Again, one of the things I've talked with the RAC about is, you know, you always deal with the most recent feedback because things change over time, and then we're developing goals tied to 2019 moving forward. But certainly, we can do a similar summary of what we worked on last year. And this is the first year, I think, when I talked about this at the last meeting, self-recognizing that we haven't done a good job before this year of even reviewing the results at a town hall and trying to have some conversation and announcing it a little more freely and openly. So, that might be a great suggestion moving forward as well, that we reflect on the prior year goal-setting, because we do look at last year's results, but not the goals. That's good feedback. We're continuing to evolve, I think, as we try and pull more people into the conversation because we don't get better if we don't. That's great, I appreciate it. All right, well, I guess there's no trick who's coming next. Mike Francis from Finance, and again, Justin will be back up at the end, so if there's anything else you didn't think of for Admin, he can likely field those very effectively as well. All right, thanks, everybody.
Morning, folks. How are you? So, as the screen says, my name is Mike Francis, I'm your Finance Director, I've been here for 14 and a half years, and I'm going to keep doing it till I get it right. That's my pledge. So, the finance news, for those of you that come to this meeting often and hear me, continues to be really good, actually, better than it's been. Independent living occupancy in February was 98 percent. We haven't hit that since I had dark hair. I think it was 2011, maybe? So, it's been a long time. Sue and her team have done a great job. The General Services folks are doing a great job turning the units. The marketing events are fully attended, we have a lot of people that want to come here, which is wonderful, so tell your friends, if they're interested, you know, don't wait, now's the time to come. So, that's really great news, because as I've said for years, we build these places to be full. And when they're full, everything works better. Because, you know, for all the financial reasons that I'm concerned with, and also building the community with a lot more folks that are able to enjoy the lifestyle. So, that's really great news to share, and Sue's not here today, so I'll steal her thunder. So, great stuff there. Through the first two months of the year, we're ahead of our revenue and operating targets, operating income targets, not surprised. We actually had a pretty mild winter, knock wood. We probably have a snowstorm waiting in the bullpen for us, you never know, right, in New England, but the good news is it melts quick. I remember when I was in high school, I played baseball, well, I was on the baseball team. I was there, but we had a snowstorm in May, and so we had to go in the gym and practice. So, it's like, you never know when it's coming, but the good news again was it was gone in three or four days. So, but from a temperature perspective, it wasn't bad. So, utility bills weren't bad in the first quarter, that's always kind of the caveat or the unknown in Q1. So, we came out of Q, we're coming out of Q1 unscathed, which is really, really cool. From a cash perspective, I'd like to tell you how rich we are. We have just about $89 million in cash, which is, again, a new high level mark. I was on the phone with Treasury yesterday, and they're very excited for us, as they should be. That's almost 500 days' cash on hand, and the bank says we have to have 140. So, we're tripling up and then some on what the bank thinks we need and what we have, so that's really good news. And again, I mean, this is a big place, it's about $170,000 a day to operate Brookspie at this point. So, to have that much days' cash on hand, so that's 500 times 170,000 is a big number. And that's where we are. So, that's really good news and just bodes well for us and our long-term viability in future, so everyone can take a deep breath, it's really good. And again, those of you that have been around for a while, we had a very different message probably 12 years ago or so. So, we've come a long way, and it's really good news, so enjoy that. The capital plan, I think Justin will probably touch on some of that when he does his presentation. We're going to spend about $5.5 million in capital this year on various projects. That's outside of the long-range plan stuff we have going on, the Green Tree Cafe right now, if any of you have been up there, it's, can't see it. So, when they take, I'm dying to see it, frankly. So, that'll be happening in a few weeks or whatever, whatever. He'll share that, but it's going to take a little bit to get done, and it's going to be beautiful when it's done. But we're investing a lot of money back into the community, as it should be, and we're just going to keep doing that forever. You know, once we're done going around the campus, whatever the cycle is, we're going to have to come back and do it again and again and again and keep the campus updated for future residents and for current residents. Now, the good news in my world, Irene came back on Monday. She's been out for a little bit, so she's back and very happy to be back at her desk. So, if you want to come by and say hi or give her a call, she'd be happy to hear from you. We have hired a few new staff members. We have Julie Russo is our new Business Office Manager in Continuing Care. That position's been vacant for a little bit, Julie started three weeks ago, I think, at this point, and is already hitting the ground running and is just full of vim and vigor and ready to go. So, very excited to have her, a very talented woman. Bonnie Nash started with us last week as move-out coordinator, reporting up to me. So, she'll be working with folks as they go through the move-out process in their units and their families and the refund process and that sort of thing. So, we're still getting her trained up, she just started. And we'll have some more staffing news coming up in the next couple of weeks. So, a lot's going on in Finance, really good stuff, very positive, and I'm very excited for 2019 with my team. So, my last topic is the same one I do every time, because Irene would yell at me otherwise, is the direct debit program works, it really does. And, you know, this past month, we had, I think, 10 checks come back from folks that filled them out incorrectly, because, again, the number in the box didn't match the number that you write out. And I don't blame you, again, I fill out like five checks a year, and it's really cumbersome to do. So, when you have to write big numbers in the little boxes, it's hard. The direct debit program works, you get a bill every month, if there's something on the bill you don't like, or you want to ask questions about, you still do that, and then the money comes out of your bank account that you choose 10 days after you get your bill. And we give you a calendar and everything that says, "This is when the money's coming out." So, it's as simple as it can be. That said, there's a new program that'll be coming, hopefully by the end of the year, where you can, you'll be able to pay your bill through your banking applications, like some people use banking applications to pay all their other bills, and some of their families do that. So, instead of us taking the money out, you can determine the day you want to pay it and pay it out of your bank account, and they're working through that now through some test properties. So, more to come on that, but lots going on in that world, just trying to simplify things for folks and, you know, and make it easier. You know, it shouldn't, you know, paying your bill for us shouldn't be a difficult task, and I think we're going to try to continue to make that as easy as possible. So, if you see Irene, tell her I talked to you about direct debit. To get me out of trouble. And that's all I really have, not too much else, so anyone have any questions, happy to take them. You have to wait for the microphone, sis.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
A simple question. You say 89 million in cash. Please explain cash as you see it. It isn't loosely sitting around. For new people here in the audience, they want to know that there's something being done with that. Thank you.
Well, that's why I need a bigger office, because it just keeps piling up. So, we have a robust cash management program that's managed through Erickson Treasury, and they're really good at what they do, and the Board is very involved in how we manage our cash. We keep about 30 days' cash in what you would call in your life, your checking account, and we use that to pay payroll, you know, the normal bills, that sort of thing. Then, there's a second tier of investments that's in money market sort of things that we probably keep another 60 to 100 days of cash in. And then, we have a Vanguard Fund that we invest long-term in securities, that's really where the investment portfolio is strong. You know, just like in your own world, I mean, if you invest in some things, when the market's strong as it is now, we've had a couple of very good years. But the good news is, I'm not managing your cash. My wife would vouch for that. We have Treasury, we have Board members, and we have consultants that are managing, all rolled up with all the communities, almost a billion dollars in total cash. And so, they are looking at this daily, weekly, monthly, monthly calls, monthly portfolio reviews to make sure that it's invested properly. And again, the Vanguard Funds are as good as it gets, you know, we talk about this at the Finance RAC Committee every month, that, you know, I think we're in good stead. And again, the good news is that it's secure, it's not, you know, we're not going to the casino with it, it's in a place where it's, it's here for our long-term viability as Brookspie Village. And the cash, again, for those of you that might be new to these meetings, the cash that we retain at the community doesn't go to Erickson. Erickson doesn't get any of your money. Erickson gets a management fee and offsets some corporate costs, but any money that is driven from the community with our 98 percent occupancy and all that stays in the community, and that's how you get to, you know, 89 million dollars in cash over, you know, 10 short years and more to come. And so, it's really a good story, and I'm proud to be able to stand up here and tell you that, because again, it's been a bit of a bumpy road in some respects way back, but right now, we're in really good shape, so you can feel good about that. Lots of questions, who's got the mic? He's coming. Krayma, is that what you call him?
Mike, it's nice that we have 89 million in cash. What I don't understand, and I'm not one to read financial statements well, is why the IRS 990 for 217 indicates that we are running a $68 million deficit. Can you correlate the two for us in any way?
Sure. Yeah, the 990 reporting is a tax report, and basically, the deficits that we report are the amortization of the entrance deposits over time. It's a non-cash entry. Yeah, we've gone through this for years, it's hard to correlate the two. So, we're not $66 million in a deficit situation. We are a not-for-profit. We do have interesting accounting rules that we have to deal with, the amortization of the entrance deposits that we've taken in. That rule actually changed when we went to the 90 percent in 2013, and so, we had to do an accounting entry again that wasn't a cash entry for, I want to say, $48 or $49 million back then, just to get the books to square with what the new GAAP rules were. So, yeah, the 990 is really hard to explain to folks. We are not in a deficit situation, we are exactly in the opposite. The other thing the 990 reflects is depreciation of the facility. You know, we have a $300 million, you know, campus here, and that gets depreciated, which again, is a non-cash item, we've already paid for the, the cash has already come out of the bank to pay for the buildings and the equipment. But from an accounting perspective, from a tax perspective, you amortize that over time, and that's a non-cash entry that again, gets reflected on the tax returns.
Mike, for the first time, I was looking at the rules for when we go away on vacation, et cetera, and I never noticed before that if you're in the hospital for at least one day, you can get a refund or a discount on your fees. Is that correct, and how does that work? Because the question I have is, not only how does it work, if there's two of us in the apartment, and one of us goes to the hospital for several days, is there any discount allowed for the one person who's gone? Do you know what's going on there?
I'll be honest, I mean, that's Irene's world, but I believe the, you have to be gone 11 days, day 11 is when the non-occupancy credit kicks in, whether you're in the hospital or not, and not just if you go to the hospital? Okay. Well, I'll look into it, that's news to me, but it's not unusual.
Here I am. Mike, respectfully, I would like to suggest, as we are so solvent, that perhaps next January, instead of our 3% or 3.5% increase, perhaps they could... instead of our three or three-and-a-half percent increase, perhaps they could give us a break and bring it down a little bit and give us something, especially neighborhood one who has been going through an ordeal with our dining. And I'm not going to touch that one with this because it has been very uncomfortable, to say the least. So if you and your powers-to-be can see fit to perhaps bring down the three percent additional costs every January, perhaps next year, you can give us a gift. Think about it, okay? I think a lot of people would like that. There are several people here who have issues but cannot talk with this. I can talk with it.
Get out. I've noticed that. So, again, the way the budget process works, we don't go in saying, "You're gonna get a three percent bump." We say, "What are the costs gonna go up?" This year, we were able to hold to a three percent bump, even though costs were going up higher. This year, we had a four-hundred-thousand-dollar WAC for the minimum wage increase, right? Because it went up a dollar, January 1st. And so we don't know what's coming next year. So once we determine what the business is gonna look like for 2020, we'll determine what we have to do with monthly fees. And we are very, we very strongly look at keeping the increases as low as possible every year. So it's not a, yeah, three percent automatic, and we, yeah, we're not gonna give a different increase to a different neighborhood because of whatever. But if you want to look at it another way, we're investing two million dollars in your neighborhood, and we're not increasing your fees. Oh, yeah, it's all being paid for. All right, this is the most important part of my presentation. Every time I'm up here, it's like, "Where are the pictures of the girls?" So these are my girls and my wife, and we just got puppies on Saturday. Yeah, you guys all say, "Ah, you should see them at five in the morning." They're two little Maltese Poo's. One's like three-and-a-half pounds, the other's four. So I was kidding, that I bought a Purdue Roaster last week that was like eight pounds. So my chicken in my fridge is bigger than my two dogs. But anyway, I knew I'd get in trouble if I didn't do a picture again. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions, you know where to find me. And here's Mary Nunn.
So I don't have any glamorous pictures to show, but happy spring, everyone. That feels good to say, right? I think it's 5:58 tonight officially, so we're almost there. So wanted to just share with you some updates that we have from the Human Resources Department. And what we want to do is celebrate some of our employees that have been promoted recently. And so Lady Romero was promoted from a home support aide to a home support scheduling coordinator. If you know anything about scheduling and coordination, it takes a lot of time, energy, effort. And so we're very happy for Lady. She started with us in 2016 as a home support aide, so maybe some of you had her as a home health aide in your apartment, but she now has been promoted to the scheduler. So if you happen to see her, certainly congratulate her on her promotion. Every year, what we like to do is go through and share with you who our of-the-year nominees are. We have different categories that we celebrate folks and their accomplishments throughout, in this case, 2018. And so next Saturday, we have what's called our Spring Fling, where we will celebrate off-campus and at our annual party and announce the winners. But wanted to share with you who these folks are that are being nominated. And then our next meeting, I'll share with you who the winners are of these awards. So in 2018, our Erickson Leadership nominee is Elizabeth May Comer. I think most of you know her as our philanthropy manager. So if you see her, she came to our annual meeting and was recognized as one of twenty leaders throughout Erickson. So she does a fantastic job. So if you see her, congratulate her. We have our Employee of the Year nominees. So we have Edwin Reed, who is in Transportation as our CDL driver. Michael Kuzman is our maintenance mechanic. Shaleen speaks very highly of him. He works behind the scenes in the kitchens fixing different equipment back there. And then Sue Hagan, who is an LPN over in Continuing Care in Brayburn Gardens. So those are our three nominees for Employee of the Year. We have our Manager of the Year nominees as well. And so we have Brandon Carroll, who's our Assistant Manager in the Security Department. Beverly Jones, who's the Wellness Manager, also in Brayburn Gardens. And then Gina Fernandez, who is the Sales Manager in the Sales Department. For the Student of the Year nominees, and I have to tell you, when we have our Spring Fling, we probably have over a hundred-plus students that come to the event, and they are the loudest cheering group that we have. So it's always fun to announce this winner here. So we have Cassandra Fabian, who is waitstaff. We have Anna Yerina Luna, who's a hostess. And we have Hannah Pelizaro, who is a waitstaff also. And then Cormac DiGilio, who's a dining associate in Continuing Care. So if you see these folks, certainly pat them on the back for a nice job. And again, like I said, next month, we'll share who the winners are at our next meeting. The next thing I wanted to share with you is our January Employee of the Month, and these are the folks that were nominated. So we have Mike Warren, who's the Administrative Assistant in Resident Life. Alyssa Pereira, who is the Facility Coordinator in General Services. Matthew Barron, who's in the back today helping us with all the equipment, our TV Lead Coordinator. Caitlin Florence, our Community Resources Coordinator. And then Tia Larry, who is the Health Services scheduler over in Brayburn Gardens. And our winner, it's always hard to select one winner because they do a fantastic job, but our winner for the month of January was Caitlin. So Caitlin Florence did a fantastic job. And Caitlin was nominated by Elizabeth May Comer. And Elizabeth held an event where she had about seventy of our waitstaff students and their parents here to discuss our Scholars Program. And Elizabeth, and I don't know if you've ever presented in the winter and you get that dry cough and it just doesn't go away, no matter how much you try and have it go away. Well, for Elizabeth, unfortunately, she couldn't get her cough to go away. So Caitlin realized that she was struggling a bit. So Katie came up and finished her presentation. Never saw the slides before, but did a fantastic job, finished the presentation. Not only after the presentation, Elizabeth kind of called upon her for her to share her story. So Katie had started with us as an Endocont intern years ago, and since then has had many promotions with us. So she was able to tell her story, which was neat for the students to hear, as well as the parents to hear, that there's opportunity after folks go off to college. So if you see Katie, give her a big congratulations. She did a fantastic job with that event. So I'm gonna pause and ask if anyone has any questions for myself. All right. Next up, we're gonna call on Shaleen Archibald, our Dining Services Director.
Good morning, everyone. So I'm gonna start with Dining Services. So we've been talking a lot this morning about the March 30th Employees Spring Fling Event, so that is our once-a-year off-site event. And what we do for that is we offer a brunch service that day. So we will have a reminder notice coming out to your cubbies. And we're gonna do some extended hours. We just thought with everything going on in Town Center, it was important to have some additional seating through a longer duration of time. So we're gonna open that brunch earlier than normal at 10:00 AM. So you will receive all that in your cubby. But again, it's a little bit of a different service day without dinner, so there will be brunch service. We have a nice menu. We are gonna do a sock hop theme. So in kind of funny news, we actually had to explain to most of our staff what a sock hop was. So they learned you actually wear shoes and poodle skirts. So if you have those things, please feel free to pull them up, be a fan of it. So in Lent going on right now, so I have a lot to talk about in regards to the holiday specials. So we are continuing with meatless offerings through the rest of Lent. So we have been featuring on our weekly specials a couple of items, so hopefully you're seeing that, whether they're either fish items or they're meatless items, so that we can help meet your needs. And we're also, we've omitted the bacon from the chowder, so you can feel good about having chowder on those Friday nights as well, if you're interested in that. So we'll continue that right through the duration of Lent. So as April, I can't believe we're talking about spring here, but this is our time of year when we start to do our recruiting for our student staff. I'm happy to say that last year, we had an unusually high number of graduating seniors. That is not the case this year. So our recruiting needs are a little bit less than they were last year, which is good news for all of you in having seasoned waitstaff. But we will be doing a kickoff. So we have a student job fair that we'll be doing in this room on April 9th, and we're here from 2:30 to 6:00 PM. And the reason I mention this to all of you is because in the past, we've actually had some folks encourage their grandchildren or nieces and nephews, family members, friends to apply. And certainly, there's probably nothing better than getting dinner in the restaurant and having, you know, a grandchild or a relative be providing that service. So if you know anybody who wants to send them our way, we'd love to chat with them. We also are still in the process of recruiting for a campus executive chef, as well as a chef for Windsor. So as you might know, it's a tight recruitment market. We have a lot of restaurants in the area, but we are continuing with that. You've probably heard me talk a little bit before about the process, but what we do is we actually start off with a phone screen. After the phone screen, we move to having them come on-site for an interview. If they do well in the interview, they actually go through a bench test process. So you may have seen myself and a couple colleagues out in the Overlook Dining. We've been using the Overlook Kitchen for obvious reasons these days for the bench tests. And they actually cook us three courses. We give them a list of ingredients, kind of like you see on those cooking shows, and they have to prepare things. They have to show us their cooking techniques. Michael Ayers is actually coming on-site and proctoring those tests for us. So he does things like watch to make sure that they understand how to properly cut chicken. If they're deboning chicken, do they know how to do that? They actually have to do three different cuts on vegetables and various ingredients and showcase those to us in those dishes, so that we know that they know those basic culinary techniques. And then they have to, they get graded, actually, on their presentation, the quality, the taste, the temperature of the food. So it's pretty comprehensive. And then they're not done there. They actually follow up that process with a written test. So they have to tell us that they know about the five mother sauces, that they understand how to work and train and teach others in a kitchen. So it takes a while, but I feel like by the time we get to the end of the process, we have chefs that really know their way around a kitchen, who can not only speak to the process, but can actually do the work. So it's a really, it's lengthy, but it does yield us some great candidates. So those are ongoing. So if you see us, you know, I keep hearing, "Oh, I saw someone today. Was that the chef?" And it hasn't been the chef yet, but we are working on that. So I wanted to talk a little bit about Town Center. So I guess I'd be remiss if I just didn't say thank you. I know you've all been on this journey with us. You know, when we handed out the paperwork for Phase Three, I think my staff and I actually did a little happy dance. We wanted to be on Phase Three probably as much as you did, which meant we're kind of gearing up towards that last plan, which got us into the café aspect of the project. So Justin, when he does his General Services updates, will speak a lot more to what's going on behind the scenes in the project. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the dining. So we are going to, so what we've been doing every Thursday at 10:30 in the morning, following Good Day Brookspie, is Peter Tomino, or myself primarily, have been doing an update on Town Center. If you haven't had a chance to tune in to see those, it gives you some behind-the-scenes footage. You get to see what's going on in the kitchen. And then last week, we actually did an update where we overviewed the communication document about all of the dining plans. So hopefully, you've had a chance to catch one of those. If not, I know there's some reruns playing as well. But I know I'm starting to get some questions about what will happen when the kitchen reopens, you know? And I'm very excited just to be talking about the fact that the kitchen's going to reopen. So, and I guess what I would tell you is it's not gonna be, we rip off the Band-Aid and the next day, the kitchen is open. We have, you may have noticed, we have three large boxes out in front of Kingsbury Clubhouse, freezers and refrigerators. So we have to close down those pieces of equipment, take all of the food, move it back in, organize it, make sure that we have everything. We do what's called sheet-to-shelf inventory, which means we could actually walk along with a clipboard in the kitchen and actually decide what we're going to order. So everything has to be very organized, because we don't want our line cooks or our prep cooks going in the fridge looking for maybe eggs and, gee, they don't know where the eggs are because we've moved where we've put them. It's a kind of a big deal in a commercial kitchen. So we have to do all of that. We're gonna have to go in, we're gonna have to test the equipment, make sure everything's functional, it's been out of commission for, you know, a few months. So there's a lot of pre-work that has to happen for that to occur. So we figured, once we get a little bit closer to that, to the end of the epoxy process and getting those final coats down, and we have some timeline, we would provide some information to you on what that'll look and feel like, so we'd see some communication going out. I also had a chance to talk to Dave Stanley, our Rack Liaison to Dining, and he has graciously agreed to do a question-and-answer format on TV. So we were sitting, and he had some really wonderful questions, and we were saying, "Boy, these would be great to share with a larger audience." So we're gonna be doing that probably in about a week or so, once we're, the project's a little more under the way, and we have some specifics about the opening. So thank you, Dave, for that. But, you know, I guess in general news, you'd want to know that Harvest Grill would still maintain a breakfast program. If you think about it, we don't have a café still. We would still have a lunch program that would be our makeshift café in the Windsor Restaurant. And then we would also maintain that carryout program in the craft room. So those would all be part of what happens when the kitchen is functional, but the green tree is still under renovation. So, and again, we'll detail that out for you, so you don't feel like you have to remember all of that, but just so you have a sense. And then we would be transitioning at some point back to more of a signature format of dining. It just wouldn't probably be day one that we do that, so we'll talk a little bit about that on the show. So anything from a dining perspective, question-wise, for me? Okay, all right. Well, I'll move into some Resident Life updates, then. So I've been meeting with the team, who are certainly wonderful in a lot of different areas. They have a very broad range in the community. So one of the things that kind of touches both of us is we have Tropical Heat Wave coming this Friday. So if you hadn't heard, that is a ticket event. They tried something new this year, where they handed out 200 tickets, and I think they were pretty close to sold out when I last heard. So I just don't want to make, I want to make sure folks don't all come to the catering room on Friday for those events and then get turned away. So if you haven't purchased a ticket, you can certainly check and see if there is one, but they were pretty much down to the wire on what was left. If you, we will be televising it, as we always do, and that's like a pie-eating contest, and we have bocce and celebrations all over campus that day, but for that afternoon celebration, that was the ticket event. So they're free tickets. We're just having folks a certain limited number of them, so that, I don't know if you recall, if anyone was here last year, you might recall it was worse than standing-room only. So we're just trying to make sure it's a safe environment for everyone. It's a popular event. So, but that's this Friday. And Tropical Heat Wave actually started in the community as a nod to spring coming. So it's actually meant to be a celebration of spring. We encourage all the staff to walk around in Hawaiian shirts and jeans and just have this kind of casual and fun day. And certainly, I would tell you, most of the staff are really interested in how the pie-eating contest goes. That's from their perspective. So we also have, coming up, a diversity tasting on Thursday, the 28th. So you may see the flags all over campus. We're in the middle of Diversity Month, so there's been a lot of different things happening across campus. Hopefully, you've had a chance to participate in some of those celebrations. So that event is on the 28th, and it's from 2:00 to 3:30. It is free. And so what we do is we set up stations from different ethnic backgrounds, and you can come in and sample. So they're just little bites, it's not a meal, but it really is fun, and you get to try some different things. And, you know, maybe one thing is spicy, you don't love that, but something else might be on the sweeter side. So they do try to balance that as well. So just a reminder from Chad, that there is something going on called the Touchstones Grief Support Group. So he suggested that if you have, if you're interested, that you actually contact him or the pastoral group. And this is something, if you've experienced a loss, that you would, and would find it helpful to be part of a group, that that is such an opportunity for you. He wanted also to remind folks, there are a lot of High Holy Days during the month of April, Passover and Easter, to name a few. And so please check your activities calendars closely, so that you can attend any of the services that are most meaningful to you. And he wanted to wish you all a happy holiday. We also have some plans from a dining perspective, to have some different appetizer items for some of the Jewish holidays, and we have some Easter plans as well. So you can check the weekly menu for those. Also, a reminder from Rokea, that we have the Brookspie Village Marathon, which is on Marathon Monday, the 15th. So please stop by the Fitness Center if you're interested in that event. And I also would be remiss if I didn't thank Matt Barron, who was in the back of the room in the TV area there, who got us nicely set up today with microphones and TV. Thank you so much for that. They're really wonderful. So anything I can answer for you from a Resident Life perspective? All right.
Can you give us a project of maybe when Windsor was a terrible?
Sure, sure. So I think we're coming with the microphone.
Okay. Have you got any kind of a date in mind of when we might be going back to normal Windsor?
Sure, sure. So normal's kind of an interesting word, because they'll be kind of a two-step process. So there will be, what will happen is the contractor will indicate that they've finished the job. We'll be going through the areas, we'll be doing a punch list, making sure that we're happy with all of the work and that everything is as it should be, and they'll turn that space over to us. At that point, we'll have to, we have a lot of moves to do. We have equipment to move in. You probably noticed, we put a wall in the middle of the dining room, we have to disassemble We have to disassemble that wall. We have to find a way to do that safely because we're still serving food there. So we have to figure out logistically exactly when that's going to happen. So once we have a sense of when the contractor finishes, we'll be able to get specific. But we're looking at weeks, I would say, yes. Not months, weeks. So, yeah, we've been saying early April as kind of our best guess. At first, we were saying late March, but it did get bumped a little bit, so early April. But we are looking just as forward to it as you are. Trust me on that.
Charlene, I would like to say that through our listening posts, I personally have heard a lot of positive comments about the changes going on in Windsor and recognition of the difficulty of this whole thing and the good planning that you have done. There certainly are discrepancies in that here and there, but they're far outweighed by good compliments, and I wanted to pass that on. I've told you in person, but I think it's important for you to be recognized here for that planning also.
Really, all my team. But I did tell them this week, the best piece of salmon I had all year was in the café in the Windsor during the makeshift café. So it really was wonderful. Great. I think there's one more question in the front.
The portions.
Yes.
One day, it's great. You get a decent portion in chicken and fish. You go back, the next day, it's half the size. And then, I still have problems with clearing the dishes before dessert, especially with the new servers.
Would you say that's Town Center or Overlook?
Any restaurant.
Any restaurant, okay. We did meet with all of the chefs, it was actually last Wednesday. So anybody who's given me a portion comment, I've said, "How has it been since last Wednesday?" So we went, we went ahead, we purchased additional scales in the kitchen, because really, what has to happen is we just have to make sure things are uniform. There's no, I would tell you, there's no conscious effort on anybody's part to cut down on portions, but we want to make sure, do the culinary staff know what the portions are supposed to be? And are they actually checking those as they go along and prepare the food? So if you're seeing anything specifically related to portions at this point, I would definitely bring it to myself or one of the general managers, the chef's attention, because we have addressed that. Chicken and fish were the things that we were hearing it most about. So we did put a push on those. We actually have a training video on chicken, so we reissued that to everyone, and they're all aware of how to cut down a chicken load. So we do some of our own butchery. Great. Okay. Well, thank you so much for all of your questions. And please tune into our 10:30 show on Thursdays. It follows Good Day Brookspie because there's really a wonderful update there. We want you to be able to see a little bit of what is happening in those areas that you can't see in Town Center. But again, thank you for all your understanding through this project. We appreciate it. Thanks.
Whoa. There we go. So if, for those who may not know me, my name is Justin Parity. I'm the Associate Executive Director here at Brookspie. And one of the pieces of feedback we got last time, Tracy mentioned this, was that just the white text on green was hard to read. So we put a black border around it. Is that better? I heard some yeses and a couple noes. Okay. All right. Some mixed results. Okay, okay. I'm hearing better. Okay. So we'll continue to work on it and make sure we get that right so that, so that folks can read it. So as Tracy mentioned, our General Services Director, Chris Massey, continues to be on a leave and is away from the community, so I'm stepping in to help out a little bit. I'll be presenting on, on General Services. And in our opening comments, Tracy talked a lot about the Resident Satisfaction Survey. And I'm going to touch on some points that we have been working on related to that in General Services. And one of the themes, as previously discussed, that we saw was there's lots of comments on cleanliness throughout the community. And when you read through the comments that many of you took the time to write, two things jumped out. One was actual cleanliness and housekeeping, washing things down, we'll talk about that. And the other was just some areas of the condition of the community, such as an area where rugs might have been a bit worn down, where there was a patched but not painted area on the walls, things along those lines. So I'm happy to talk to both of those. So in terms of cleanliness, there were, there were four main themes that popped up. They were, they were the stairwells, handrails, restaurant furniture, and carpets. So we've already put a lot of work into tackling these items because this is what you were telling us where our opportunities were. Excuse me. So what we have done is we, I've sat with the, the housekeeping leadership team, and we have worked through a number of things, including a review of the entire housekeeping schedule throughout the campus. So actually, when we have housekeepers scheduled and where. And we've taken some time to really focus on stairwells and handrails in particular. Different times of year, there are different parts of the campus that really need to be focused on. So when we're in the winter and there are salt and there are sand on the ground, of course, our entryways get a lot dirtier than they do in July. So we've made sure that those areas are a big area of focus, including stairwells and handrails. I'm hoping that if you had an area where you saw that there was a handrail that was of concern, it has been scrubbed down considerably. If you're not seeing those changes, feel free to let me know, and we'll address that particular area. But that has been an area of focus in terms of rounding. We've also had some, we've had an external vendor, a professional rug cleaning company has come in here and attacked several areas on campus while you're asleep to get some areas tidied up. Excuse me. And I'm happy to say that we've also filled the position of the Housekeeping Supervisor in Continuing Care. So a lot of focus going on there. And then in terms of some of the comments around condition of some of the items in the campus, what we do is we take a close look at what needs to be replaced from a capital expenditure standpoint, and also link that to our timeframe with a long-range strategic plan and say what makes sense to do where. So that's, that's an ongoing process. And some areas that were brought up are actually, through the comments, are actually on our list of things to address in the next 12 to 18 months as well in terms of replacement. Moving on to parking, man, we've talked about parking a lot, haven't we? So last meeting, I shared with you that we had a revamped parking program coming down the road. So last week, we actually got our first look at the, at the new parking programs, first time I had an opportunity to look through it. And there are a number of items in it that are an area of focus for us to roll it out now. So that includes some updates to our Friends and Family Program, which can make entry to the community a bit, bit more streamlined and also help with some of our tracking as to where folks are going. Some updated parking maps when folks come into the campus, some new parking passes that are issued to visitors. I mentioned this in a previous meeting, but identification of dedicated gatehouse personnel and really specific training for the security officer who'll be working in the gatehouse. And once we get all that groundwork laid, we, we are putting some more teeth to the enforcement and the citations. And that is applicable to vendors, to visitors, to employees, and to residents. So once we have our groundwork rolled and we're ready to, to then go forward with the citation side of that, we'll do quite a bit of messaging about what that means for you, what it means for your neighbors, what it means for our staff. So more information coming as we tighten up our operations to get to that point to launch that. Early, early feedback from the communities that rolled this out before this was, this was a hugely beneficial program, and I'm excited that this is going to help us get us over that hump in terms of parking. I know that's, that's a really important issue for, for residents. And then spring safety rounds. Last meeting, a resident made a comment about sidewalks outside, and in the next month or so, we will actually start our external rounding. We do this every spring, once we get through the majority of the freeze-melt cycles and outside of the majority of the snowstorms that we get. Because of course, living in New England, if you ever owned a home with a walkway, you know over time that due to freezing and melting, things can shift a little bit on the ground. Sometimes our curbs get hit by plows and need to be replaced. So we will, in the very near future, be rounding all around our campus and looking at the condition of sidewalks. We do have some dollars set aside to repair sidewalks. We do that every year, and that's, that's coming down the road shortly. In the meantime, we have identified areas. If you see an area that is sprayed with orange spray paint, that is meant to call your attention to that area, and when it gets a bit warmer out, we're going to, to fix that because things like poured concrete and whatnot might not cure with winter temperatures. So that means that has already been identified as an area to fix. And then one item as a follow-up from last meeting, a question was asked about vendors and folks doing work here on campus, contractors, those types of folks, and their access through external doors. One of the things I can say is that we do not and we have not issued actual external keys to vendors. Those don't go to other parties. So if anybody does have a key, it did not come from us. What we did do last year for the first time is, while we had the window project going on, is those folks who are putting in the windows, if you lived in one of the buildings that has gone through this, are the, the window installers are in and out of the building constantly throughout the course of the day. So we do have temporary badges that we can issue in the morning. They can be coded to only open certain doors and at certain times. We can see who uses it every time, then we can collect it back at the end of the day. So that gives us much better control over that external door access than if somebody were to be given a, a hard key. So that's something last year we did for the first time. We had some success with it, and we're going to revisit whether we're going to do that this year with the window installers as well. So that's it. Those are my updates in terms of General Services before I move on to the next topic. Are there any questions that I can answer for General Services? Judy?
Hold on.
Judy, can you wait for a mic? Thanks.
Okay, two questions, Justin.
Yes.
So one is periodically, and I think this is a General Services question, they vacuum the dryer vents from the outside. And I know that aside from the fact that some people have difficulty getting their dryer vent thing out, lint gets in there beyond the vent that you can't reach. Also recently, I would swear I heard a bird in mine. I didn't take it out to check. Okay. But, but I wondered if that was on the schedule, if that was something we do regularly, because I know that that does happen occasionally. It would be nice. The second thing is before we got the new app, for those of us who used MyEricson, you could submit a work order request online. So you didn't have to call and wait till somebody was in the office. You could just say, "I have, I have no hot water," or whatever. If it wasn't an emergency thing, you could just submit it, then they would get back to you. Are we going to be able to have that ability again?
Sure, yeah. So I'll answer those questions in order. In regards to the cleaning out of the dryer vents, I'll get that information for us. I don't know the details of it, so I'll get that information, and we can, we can share that. And in terms of the bird, yeah, just, just like a house, from time to time, critters do go in there because it's warm, and sometimes we have to chase them out. That's real. And then in, in terms of the app, the, the plan is eventually to have an electronic work order functionality in the app. That function turned out to be a little bit buggy, so it's being worked on again by the IT team. And when that's ready to launch, where I'll be sure to present on it. With MyEricson in general, a bit of a pause point because there's, there's going to be some new icons that come out, there's going to be some new content, there's going to be different areas that can be accessed by visitors and by residents, and we're just a couple weeks away from announcing what all those changes are. So I'm going to have a lot of information on MyEricson coming down the road. But great questions, Judy. Sis, was your hand up?
Yeah.
Oh. Sorry. Ken went the other way.
I have one, I have one more question on the MyEricson. I looked up my name under contacts, and, well, first of all, I'm not listed in the directory. That's number one. And I sent you an email and about stating that I wasn't in the directory and please have my name and information added, and I never heard anything about that. Secondly, then I looked up under contacts, and I said, "Oh, maybe it's something I can do myself," and put in the information, and it went nowhere. So I'm kind of confused about, other than knowing the number of meals a month that you are consuming, I'm not getting much out of it.
Okay. So sorry to hear that about the outreach to me. I don't have an answer for that, so you and I, we can chat afterwards. If you do not appear in the directory, unless it was an error in the data entry process, it means, what it usually means is when you moved in, that pink sheet that you filled out when you moved in, there are areas that you can fill out in regards to approving your information to be shared with other folks. And for most folks, if you either didn't fill it out or you chose to keep your information private, that's how you don't end up in the directory. If that's not the case with you, then that's just an error, and I'll grab you afterwards. We can talk through it, and we'll get it fixed, okay?
Hello? I have a question about the parking. When will we get the new rules about the parking?
So I'm going to keep you updated on parking through these meetings and through the Buzz. I mentioned that in the last edition of the Buzz as well. So I'm going to keep this information coming because we know it's, it is a high priority for residents. So stay tuned. I'm going to continue to message it every month here and in the Buzz. We need some things that we need to iron out in how we operationalize it first before we're ready to present it. So it's coming very soon. Bill?
Justin, Dave Stanley, you mentioned the temporary passes given to the windows installers. Can you do the same program for movers who now use stones or tape so that they also have a temporary pass for specific doors on specific days?
So at present, we have limited it to the window installers because that is a long-term project where we have the same people on campus day after day for a period of weeks. So thus far, we have kept it to a small range of folks, and we haven't had much conversation about expanding it to others. I see where you're coming from, Dave, but we haven't had conversations about expanding it that broadly quite yet. Yeah, yeah, I mean, we have to talk through kind of what are the, what are the, what are the positives and negatives of that. So, yeah, I could do some follow-up on that.
Justin, Bill Schooler, I use the MyEricson app, and I think one of the very discouraging things about when you go to the contacts and you're trying to find somebody, you don't know where they live, you want their phone number, et cetera, it takes you forever to type in somebody's name. And it's just very, very, at least on my iPhone, it's that way. I don't know what it's like on my PC, but it takes so long that I think, you sort of think it's not working. I just wonder if there's something fundamental about the program they can change so that when you type in stuff, it goes in right away.
First, I've heard of that, so I'm making a note of that, so you can follow up, Bill.
My name is, excuse me, Cindy Brown. I live in Orchard View Court, and I'd like to know, is it helpful to you folks regarding parking if we actually report license plate numbers of people who are, do not have resident stickers, are and are parked in resident spots? This is a very common issue, especially beyond, behind Orchard View Court. There's theoretically no spots except for residents, either reserved or non-reserved, one vendor spot, one drop-off spot, but there's always people there, especially on weekends, family, et cetera, whoever comes and parks back there. Is it helpful to you folks to give you the license plate numbers of those residents, of those cars that should not be parked there?
So if, if you identify something and you want to share it, it is helpful to share that with our security team. I actually had a good conversation with Steve Caruso about that yesterday. What I don't want you is, I want you to feel obligated to do it and feel like you have to look out your window and monitor. But if you do have some information that you want to share, you can call our security team and share that, yeah.
I have talked about this before, but I would like to refresh it. General Services has a meeting that they, they run every other month. It's very informative. It answers so many questions to our audience, to everybody who needs to know what is going on on campus. I find that this is one, one area that we should all participate in. If you don't see any information in the papers or the periodicals about it, just find out, call General Services. They will be doing more advertising. It is a wonderful group. They will be doing more advertising. It is a wonderful group. It answers so many questions. And I'm not part of General Services, but if I like it, I want to share it with everybody. And with that in mind, door 10 has got an awful noise coming from it. And I haven't called General Services, but we don't know what is causing this. It is just a racket. And since I live right next door to door 10, it can be very uncomfortable. And I would like to know if you know when the next meeting is.
So you did kind of a sandwich there. The next meeting, I actually have to check the schedule to see when exactly the next meeting is, but I appreciate the plug on that. And then in terms of door 10, we'll take a look at it. I just made a note of it, Sis. Yep, it's on my list. So, folks, what I want to do is, I have some more updates to get to. I see there's other questions. We're getting short on time. So what I'd like to do is go through some administrative updates, and then we can open up to more questions, okay? So it's not that I don't want to hear the questions, I just want to make sure we're being sensitive to everybody's time. So I'll move on to administration, then we'll open it back up to some questions. So in terms of some of the long-range updates, so the Green Tree Cafe. So you may have noticed, and you probably got the communication in your cubby, that the Green Tree Cafe is now shut down. We've been going through the demolition process and working with the contractor to disassemble the green tree as you know it. And work will soon begin on essentially rebuilding it. The plan is expected to take about four months, so we're on target for a July reopening. And we will continue to keep folks posted. Again, I'll use this meeting, and I'll use the buzz to give updates as to next steps in the process. And Charlene touched a bit on some work we have going on in the Town Center Kitchen. She did note that we're shooting for an early-to-mid-April reopening of the Windsor Restaurant. So if you happen to see the day that the concrete was being pumped into the kitchen for the new floor, that concrete had to be wetter than typical concrete for it to be able to be pumped up the boom. So because of that, it also required a little bit longer of a drying time. So that set us back about a week from our initial timeframe. But it's now dried. There was work done on Monday to score the surface and get it prepped for the new epoxy floor. And yesterday, the contractor started the process of putting down what is essentially a primer for the epoxy. So that's a coating that goes down on the floor that's going to help the epoxy adhere nicely to the floor. And once that process is over with, then it's, several coats of the actual epoxy flooring will go down. Once that is done, we move things back into the kitchen, and some of the items that Charlene talked about then start to fall into place in terms of getting the equipment back online, getting that kitchen back operational, and getting you the full Windsor back in operation. So we're excited about that. Just while we're here, a plug about the apartment access form. We did a lot of messaging about that. That was in the buzz. A specific letter about it got cubby stuffed in every resident's cubby. I'm happy to say we've gotten about a 75% response on this. As a reminder, what this form does is, in the event that you either move out and are unable to close out your residence, or that you pass away, it grants access for two folks to be able to have access to your apartment. This is a change in policy that actually is very resident beneficial. Makes it a bit easier for folks to have access to your apartment in those circumstances. So for those who have not yet filled it out, we've been tracking who turns it in. And if you haven't turned it in, you're going to be getting another copy in your cubby in the next week or so. We are going to ask for folks to fill that out and turn it in, because it will benefit your estate in the event that you pass away. It's going to be beneficial for you to do that. Because otherwise, what we're going to then do is, we're going to expect that the estate goes through the probate process before we grant access to the apartment. And that can take a significant amount of time. We don't want to put you in that position, nor the folks who manage your estate. So if you have more questions about that, feel free to ask me, and I can share some information about it. And then a note on EMVs, or electric motor vehicles. So we've had a little conversation with RAC about this of late. And EMVs are wonderful tools, because if you are one who uses it, it is potentially the thing that is the great liberator for you, and opens up the world to you. EMVs, we also ask and expect responsible operation, because they are small vehicles, and they can crash into things if they're not managed appropriately. So some notes along those lines. We do expect that all employees who have an EMV register it with security. When you do that, you will be issued a copy of rules of the road, and some of that communication will include recommendations around insurance coverage as well. So that's why it's important for, if you do have an EMV, to get it registered with our security team. And there has been a little bit of conversation about, well, what do I do if I feel like somebody is driving unsafely? Maybe somebody's going too fast. Maybe I'm noticing my neighbor's having a little bit more trouble, and running into walls and whatnot. And in that circumstance, make us aware of it. So you can tell someone in security, you can tell the resident services coordinator in your neighborhood, and that will allow us to have some follow-up, and make sure that everything is okay with that resident. We do have well-established rules of the road, and expectations around operating EMVs on campus, and then what we do if we have a concern about operation as well. So those rules are well-established, and as folks get registered, that helps us keep an eye on that process. And then circling back to just a couple of items, a question was asked last month, actually, Sis just brought it up again, about an x-ray machine. And we do not have an x-ray machine in the medical center. We have no intention of getting one, because one of the things that's available, the wonderful technology we have today, is that in the event that you do have the need for an x-ray in your apartment, your provider can order that. And there are mobile x-ray systems that can come to your apartment and do the x-ray there. But that is not something that we plan to have here in the medical center. And then a follow-up on a safety item, just a note about the Brooksby Marathon. Just for clarity's sake, you don't have to run the marathon. You absolutely can just get outside on a nice day and walk, which is what I think most residents choose to do. So just a little note on that. And then let's open it back up to questions for folks. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any update about having a computer and Macintosh adding another computer with a printer in Macintosh and at Kingsbury? This is cut down to three now, and having that extra one with the printer would be very helpful.
Yeah, so Geraldine and I have talked about this a couple of times. And what we're going through right now is, as a community, as an enterprise, we're actually changing our printer vendor. And one of the most commonly brought up, hey, it would be nice to have conversations, has been a printer in every clubhouse. And we think we're going to be able to accomplish that. Our contract with our current printer company is expiring soon, and we're going to be entering into another one. And that we can address when we get to the next contract with the next printer company. So that's coming down the road. Geraldine, I haven't forgotten about you, and that's a, yes? Yes, it's the same conversation. We're going to wait until we have the printers to put the computer out.
Excuse me, I should probably know this. The parking that was changed, do I understand that it's only green stripe places that people, for instance, visitors can park? And there is not seem to be many green spaces here near Liberty?
So I'm actually going to hold off on that a bit, because we may be, in this whole parking program, we may have to go revisit our striping. And what I want to be able to do is, I want to be able to give one clear, concise message. Don't want to give you one now, and another one two months from now, that will confuse folks. So this ongoing communication about parking is going to be coming down the road. But good question.
You sort of answered the question. We were coming back from Overlook yesterday, and we were going through the walkthrough, where the diversity flags are. And we saw a resident in an electric chair. She went into one of the big plants, the window knocked that over, and then she pulled out the bench right next to it. Didn't know how to control it. Do you have a test that you can test these people, make sure they're competent? Because if someone's coming out the way, they would have mauled them. If someone's walking the other way, they would have mauled them.
So you're right. I do feel, as I touched on that a bit, is that if you do have a concern about one of your neighbors, right? Because in that situation, we want to make sure that that resident is okay. So in that situation, you want to make someone aware, whether it's a resident services coordinator, security officer, and we can respond. Lots of questions. This is great.
I have a question here, please, Justin. When can we expect the TV in the chapel to be fixed so that we can broadcast church services, et cetera, again? It's been three months.
Great question. I'm glad you brought that up. So we went through a bidding process with vendors. We then had to go back and revisit some of the bids with folks, and make sure that we had apples-to-apples bids. We got that finalized information on Friday, so I anticipate that that's going to be happening in the next month or so. So we will keep you posted about that as well. We know that's something that needs to be fixed.
I may have missed this, but was there an update given about the medical center? Are you all looking for a new director? And is there also going to be, I don't know what the title was, but like an administrative assistant? Is there going to be a psychiatric nurse? Can we have an update?
Sure. I can give updates on all of those things. So we are recruiting for a practice administrator, a medical director, to follow up Dr. Acker. And thus far, we've been unsuccessful in finding a neuropsychiatric nurse practitioner that we think really is a good fit for us. We're continuing to recruit for that as well. We've had some interviews. We just haven't found the folks that we think are quite right for us, along the lines of the nurse practitioner, where we're actually evaluating other options that we might have for temporary support as well. We realize that's a need that we have. So we are recruiting on all of those positions.
Hi. I'd like to talk also about those, what happened at Overlook last night with that little mobile transport the woman was driving. She was driving in front of us very erratically, and then finally she hit the bench. Are there any testing on people who use that? Because many times, I walk the car with us a lot, and I have to tell people, slow down, slow down. Some of them are driving too fast.
So testing is not a requirement for the ability to operate an EMV on campus. And there are some things tied to the Americans with Disabilities Act that are the cause of that, are the reason for that. We do have training programs available through our outpatient rehab clinic that are available to folks. But again, if you have a concern about a neighbor, please bring it forward. We want to make sure that we're taking care of that person, if there's a particular issues with that person. And last question, because we're a little bit past 11:30 now, and if you have some others, you can grab me afterward.
Barbara brought up the question of security. I have another security concern, and that is that many people, or some people who have ground-level apartments with sliding doors, have their guests arrive through those doors. They come in and park in resident spots, and they use doors directly into an apartment. Now, my understanding is that all guests are supposed to come in through the clubhouses, and are supposed to sign in and then sign out. So to me, this is a big security risk. And are those doors guaranteed to be locked at night? Or can those doors be left open by mistake? I don't know if they automatically lock, or what the process is. But I think that those ground-level apartments are a big exposure security-wise.
Yeah, and you will see, so thank you for bringing up that point. You will see in the resident handbook that if you do have a ground-level apartment with a patio, that patio is not to be used as an entrance and egress for the apartment. Folks should not be walking over grass and using the apartment to go in and out. So you are correct in that that is not to be an entrance for visitors or for residents, as outlined in the handbook. And residents own the responsibility of making sure that their door is shut at night. All right, so any other questions that folks have? You can come on up, and you can grab me. I want to be sensitive to time, but I really appreciate all the questions. We had a lot of them this month, so thank you.